Hi Nathan.
All right.
We don't know what happened there is I had to close the meeting and reopen, so I apologize. I don't know.
No worries. Hopefully, we are opened up with the PG version and not the PG version.
Yes, and I apologize. I don't know. I've never had that happen before, so hopefully, we've got, looks like we just got Steve's coming back on, and I think we have everyone else back, so.
All right. Yep, I see Steve disconnecting his audio now, so.
I think it was George Ash that did that one. No, I'm just kidding. Okay.
I can barely manage myself over here and much less everyone else, Teresa.
All right. Okay, so let's start over again. It's recording and let's go.
All right, well, we'll pick up where we left off, Steve, if you wouldn't mind jumping back in procedurally on the formalities of a public hearing.
Okay, on a public, for a public hearing, the way that the bylaws for this planning commission are is that, is that there actually should be a formal motion to open a public, a public hearing. And that's just as simple as it a motion, it does require a second, and then there's a vote, and then it's, it's opened. Procedurally, then, it's, it's, it's not as structured in your bylaws. My recommendation is generally after the public hearing is opened that you would then go ahead and hear from, hear from staff. And then after staff from the applicant, and then after that, you can hear from the public. Now, if you want, you could actually hear from staff and the applicant before it's open for a public hearing, but it's, it's nice to be able to do that just in case some questions arise during those presentations. You already have somewhat of an, an open format. I know that, I know that historically, we've allowed the public hearings to, to go without a lot of, of structure. I would recommend that the time for the presentation as well as time for public input be limited. That doesn't mean that you restrict that. I mean, people can usually get their, what it is they need to say within, within a couple of minutes. And the reason I say that is that, you know, sometimes we'll have a short agenda, and so we'll allow people to, to go on because we want them to feel like they've been heard. But then, if you get into, into a position where you have a heavy workload and you want to reduce that, then it's just not quite as equitable. So if we stay consistent with that, then, then it's, it's a lot more understandable. I would also recommend that, that each person just gets a say just once instead of repeating, because then it, it gets circular and it, it costs both the commission and, and those attending some time and a little bit of angst. And so if it's just maintaining the, you know, just kind of a just the facts type of a program, or type of a, then that seems to work the best. Then, at the conclusion, the, the chair will ask if anybody else has any, any comments, and if the, if they're, they've completed with the input from the public, and then again, it requires a motion to close the public hearing. At that time, the commission has the option of going ahead and having a discussion amongst themselves as far as the input goes, as, as far as what they've heard and their, their concerns are. But at that time, any input from the applicant or the public is, is no longer allowed. And then there would be a motion to be made on the issue that is presented to the commission. That can be any of them, any of the motions to deny, to, to continue till the next meeting, to approve it, to approve it with, with any type of additional requirements or restrictions that the commission felt, felt are appropriate. And generally, all of the public hearings that are before this planning commission that are forwarded on to the city council, and so that motion then would also include a recommendation to that body for approval. The commission also has the, the discretion as to how formal you want those to be. For example, the applicant gets up and makes their presentation. There may be some questions from the members of the planning commission, and the, and the chair and the commission can determine whether they want those questions to go through the chair or just go directly to the applicant without the chair recognizing that question. I didn't say that very well. That doesn't mean that the person has to say to the chair, were you asking this question? They'll just get the chair's permission to ask the question of the applicant. And that, again, that just depends on just how formalized you want the process to be. I mean, in Morgan City, everybody's really respectful of each other. People don't talk over each other, and so that's really not a problem. Sometimes you'll get into some of the heated debates like going on at the, at the Capitol right now, and so they make sure that the permission to speak or address questions or answer questions is given through the chair of each of their respective committees. Again, I don't know that we've needed that, that type of a structure, but again, that's at your discretion. That's just kind of a quick thumbnail sketch of how they're to operate. I don't know if anybody has any questions?
Yeah, I appreciate that. Steve, with respect to rebuttal comments, you mentioned during the public hearing that a good, best practice for the structure is to limit one turn per person. If, if there are questions for a specific commenter, is, do you recommend engaging with the public comment or just listening to it?
Yeah, I would just say just listen to it. Obviously, if there's a, if there is a question there, that it might be a legitimate question as far as the impact of the project. Then what I would do after that member of the public has, has finished their presentation is that you can invite the applicant or direct it to staff. Can staff answer that question? It's generally better to try to, to go to staff, because if, if, if you keep going back to the applicant each time, then, you know, those that are there for the public input might feel as though is the applicant is getting more of a say than, than the public.
All right, anything else from, from other commission members with respect to how we'll proceed over the next, well, seven o'clock when this commences? Thank you, Steve. I appreciate you taking the time to, to give us that thumbnail summary of how this works.
So is that you or Teresa that booted me out of the meeting?
It was me.
We all got booted.
I'll not take it personal, then.
All right, we'll use the next eighteen minutes then to just have some internal discussions, part of our working session with respect to the, the application for the public hearing. Now, let me, I'm just scrolling down to the big packet, twenty-one pages, yes.
The eight oh one five oh nine two two three three is Cam Sidwell, just to let you know.
Okay.
He would be a owner within three hundred feet of the public hearing.
Okay. Very good. Noted. All right, with respect to, to this application, there are two things going on. And as Steve indicated, both, both of these require a recommendation to the city council. This isn't something that, that we make the decision in this body, but we're recommending body on behalf of the city council. That being said, we'll be looking at the Riverview Apartments on State Street. This is two fifty-five, two fifty-four North State Street. There's, the apartment complex is on the same access road that two fifty north that you would use to access the, the River Burger complex. And I don't know what else we call that, but River Burger is the front, the front store there. And so this is to amend one of the plots. That's the, the applications request, and then also to rezone part of that plot from, from general commercial to multifamily RM fifteen. And so the, the rest of that apartment complex already is RM fifteen, and the idea would be to extend that zoning into a little bit of the general commercial area. So if we have, can you pull up, Teresa? I have it on my screen, but I don't think it'll share as well as if you bring it up. I'm looking at page sixteen in the packet. Let's see. Teresa, do you have that handy? You're on mute. There we go. Okay, thank you. So this, this shows just above that red rectangle, that, that shows the, the already developed units with the River Burger being there on the end. The apartments, the Riverview Apartments are in back in the slashed lines, the slashed blue lines, and then the subject property that we're looking at is in the red rectangle. So what, what we're looking to do today is consider the applicant's request to take that portion that's currently listed as as commercial general and making it, say, commercial general, general commercial, I think, and making that RM fifteen. So that's, that's two separate events that need to happen. We, we need to consider whether to make that positive recommendation or, or reject that proposal. Make that recommendation to the city council, depending on how that goes, then we make the recommendation regarding the, the plat amendment. So it's a two-step process. That being said, let me just open it up to the other members of the commission to bring forth any topics of discussion with respect to this, this application's request.
Mr. Chair, can I just offer a point of clarification?
Yeah.
Just so that we're all aware, so, and Teresa, I don't know if this is included, it should be included, the, the plat map that they provided, but it's not the entire property of the CG the commercial zoning that they're looking to rezone. It's just the vacant portion with regards to rezoning, so that they would take in just a small portion of that enough to build a multifamily structure back there.
Thanks for that clarification. Other comments?
Well, we've been caught, things have had to have changed. What's changed? Why do we need, what, why, I guess, would be the question?
Yeah, so it's a good question. Don't know the answer. Anyone want to comment on that?
I could address that. So there's flexibility in the general plan for, you know, when you have boundaries that, if you look at the general plan, this line, you know, can fluctuate a little bit. Either way, it's not a parceled out general plan, and so to delineate exactly where the existing general plan calls out commercial versus multifamily, that, there's, there's some flexibility in that. This is at the request of the applicant, and his staff has looked at this. This does meet the general intent of the plan, the general plan, as well as this is a, you know, generally, this is a good way to service commercial areas when you bring in multifamily, which is an important part of providing equitable housing in the city. The best thing to do is identify locations like this that have the lowest amount of impact on single family and provide a good impact for commercial and, you know, lower impact on traffic where you got State Street right here. So in general, it's, it's a good place, a generally a good place for multifamily. Overall, the reason why really is because the applicant has requested it, and the, the staff has looked at it and identified it as a reasonable request.
So Jim, I don't know if that satisfies your, your question. The, the concern that I have, it, it's not an issue of whether it's a good thing to have, you know, an apartment complex or, or RM fifteen in this area. From my standpoint, agreeing that that's a good complementary support use for a commercial area. And, and that's, it's already there. So we already have apartments there. We're in agreement with that. I, I think the, the question that's on my mind is how this changes the usability of the remaining commercial property. So one, once we take a third of that property off, and, and now it's a much smaller commercial lot for whatever eventually comes there, once that residence is, is no longer there, it limits, in, in my mind, it limits the uses and, and you know, from the adjacent properties, we, we can already see, you know, there's some access challenges just with a, a property that size, and so you make it even smaller. And, you know, my concern is that it, you know, it may not be as functional, and it can limit what happens there in the future. So, you know, from my standpoint, I really like the, the, the RM fifteen designation behind commercial. But to sacrifice some commercial to make that happen when I already have that used in place and, and built out. I, I, I just want to understand it a little bit more. To Jim's point, what's the, what's the driving cause for doing that now, other than, hey, it's a, it's a vacant piece of land and we can put an apartment complex there, so let's do it. I'm trying to think more longer term from a planning perspective. Eventually, there's going to be a commercial use on this land, and I, I just don't know what that, what that's going to play out to be once we shrink the lot size. It looks like we've got someone speaking, but they're on mute.
This is Mark Francis. I, I have a question about multifamily. Does that include condominiums and apartments? Are they applying for one or the other? Or both?
Yeah, multifamily, I, I'd have to go look through the code, but in general, multifamily is more than two attached units. So there's varying degrees and varying densities of multifamily. The RM fifteen is the most dense multifamily. That doesn't mean that the, you know, project here is going to be super dense. That just means that it potentially could have, you know, a higher density. But more than two units attached is going to be classified as multifamily.
So does that mean some of them will be rentals and some of them will be purchased as condos?
We'd have to talk to the applicant regarding how multifamily doesn't necessarily mean it's rental or ownership. There's multifamily fits into both, so it's just how the property owner decides to manage that.
Okay, thank you.
We have just a few minutes left in our working session. What other, what other planning items do you want to discuss?
Mr. Chair, this is Dan Dixon.
Yes.
I got a quick question for you. I'm just wondering, with respect to this proposal tonight, what are the options that we have as a planning commission? In other words, I, I would assume that one would be to approve the recommendation, one would be to deny. Are there other options?
Well, just to clarify a couple of things. One, approving or denying, these are recommendations, as, as you'd indicated, to the city council. So we, we won't be approving or denying anything, but we'll be sending either a favorable recommendation or not. Now, that, that being said, outside of a yes or a no recommendation, you know, Steve, I'm guessing that we could, we could do a, a, a number of things if we didn't feel like we had enough information or we wanted to, I know with the, the RUP hearing, I think we, we postponed the decision. And so we did the public hearing one, one night, and then a month later, we did the, the discussion and decision point. I don't really recommend doing that again, but, but that is something that we've done in the past. So Steve, I don't know if there's other options that you could offer, Dan.
Those are, those are good points. The other thing that you can do is, is regardless of what your motion is, you can always ask the city council to consider different issues that maybe caused you some, some concern. And you can identify those in your motion.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I mean, just to add to that, as far as your, your motions, this is a little different than the, the previous residential zone. This, this does and would meet the general plan, but so does commercial. And the, you know, the, the general point of having commercial here, it's, you know, it's worth the discussion in the, the general meeting. And I could make an argument on both sides. I think this is reasonable, but you, as the planning commission, you know, you can come to the recommendation if, if you do or do not feel that it's appropriate and feel confident in that, in that, making that recommendation to the, to the city council.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have another comment slash question here. Has this been done in other parts of the city recently, in the last few years? And if so, where, where has that happened?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll let staff weigh in on, on some specifics. The, the only change that I recently can think about is on, on the other side of the city, in the commercial district where the bowling alley is, and the apartments that went in over there, if I'm not mistaken, I believe that was commercial and was changed to residential. That part of the city has not seen the commercial develop to the extent that State Street has. You know, coming down from, from Commercial Street, I, I forget the, the name of that, that road, Trojan Boulevard, that's right there. And, and so that's the only one I can think of, but anyone from staff or that, that can recollect a, a different one?
I'd defer to Steve.
Yeah, that's, it was commercial to, to the residential, yes. The only other one was the increasing density, obviously, the, the large development behind Tractor Supply. And then on the north side of town, I think, I don't think there's been any additional or, or changes over there, but those are the, the two most recent.
Mr. Chair, I have one other comment on this, and that is procedurally on this particular topic, it's also good training. There happens to be a potential question on associations with this project, and who on the council should or should not be involved in that hearing. So I, as a new councilman, would like to understand, or a committee member, like to understand, you know, at what point, and I'm talking about myself here, in this particular property, I have a relation to the person who's involved with this. How do we, as a training exercise here, go through that for this hearing?
Yeah, the guidance that we've been given in the past is if, if you have a financial interest in the property under discussion, then you should recuse yourself from, you know, from the vote. Now, in, in a small town like Morgan, we're all going to have relationships with, with many of the applicants, so it can't simply be based on having a relationship with the applicant. It's, it's that financial interest. Steve, in the past, there's even been conversation, should, should you walk out of the room for the discussion? And can you weigh in on what's appropriate in this, in this particular case?
Sure. We actually, you, once again, your, your bylaws do a great job on, on defining a conflict of interest. Obviously, if there's a, a direct financial impact, there, there's no question that you should recuse yourself. And, and once you do that, if we were ma- meeting physically, I would actually ask that you leave the room and not be a part of the discussion. And that, knowing that this conflict of interest was, was coming up, that you not have a discussion with any of the other commission members. Now, again, as, as the chair alluded to, not necessarily just in small towns, but you think about any decision that a, that a city council makes is, there's going to be a conflict of interest. I mean, if they decide to increase business licensing fees and someone that owns a business or a friend owns a business, so there, there's going to be a conflict of interest almost at every level. And so the, again, your, your bylaws give you a good outline for that. It's one of those where, like I said, every decision is going to impact you perhaps more indirectly than directly, but there's still that potential conflict. And so what you have to decide for yourself, first of all, from a personal standpoint, are those relationships going to impact my decision? As opposed to just having the facts before me? And you need to make that decision, first of all. And if you, if you're realizing that, you know, that you, you have such a, a relationship with these folks that you can agree to disagree, then so be it. The other touchstone that you would want to look at is from an outside standpoint, what would the appearance of this be? Would, you know, would this just not look good from the public standpoint, knowing that I have a relationship with these folks? And even though it might meet all of the criteria of the city ordinance, if I'm involved in the approval of that, is that, is that not going to, is that not going to look good that, you know, I did one for my buddies or, or from, you know, for a neighbor or for a relative? And so, you know, we have to be careful of that as well. And, and so I always tell, you know, different entities that I work with, once you see that application come forward, if you have a concern, feel free to, you know, give me a call, give Weston a call, and, and we can walk through that. We can look at what the provisions are in the bylaws. We can talk about, you know, the relationship, and then we can talk about the appearance as well. But again, it's always, it's always best to be on, on the safe side. But again, there could be some situations where if, if it's a big enough project, everybody could declare a conflict of interest and no decision could be made, right? If everybody recused themselves. And so sometimes it puts you in a tough spot, being on the planning commission or being on the city council, because, you know, you, you might have a neighbor on either side of you that, that they both have, they have strong opinions both ways, and you know that, at the end of the day, one of them's going to be mad at you. And that's why you get paid the big, the big bucks, you know?
All right, thanks, Steve. And, and Justin, I think it, it may be a good idea, regardless of what you choose, that you acknowledge and disclose the, the, the potential conflict as, as part of the public record.
And that's, and that's a huge key. I'm, I'm glad that you brought that up, Mr. Chair, is that, is that regardless of, of it, is it, it is something that's disclosed. It could say, you could say, I've got a conflict of interest, and so I'm not going to participate, or you can say, I've got a conflict of interest, this is what it is. And in spite of that conflict of interest, I am confident that I can go forward being impartial and make the decision that needs to be made ba- based on the code. Now, if you were down at State Capitol during these forty-five days, then they kind of throw conflict of interest out the window, but I didn't say that, sorry.
All right, we are past our time, so thank, thank you for the question. We needed to address that. I appreciate it. Let's go ahead and get started. Today is February sixteenth, and want to welcome everybody to our planning commission meeting this evening, as well as the public session that we will be conducting as part of this meeting. Thank you all, members of, of the public who are joining via Zoom or the YouTube live link. This meeting is being recorded. Please keep that in mind. We are grateful for your interest and citizenship and willing to be part of the, the process to help make sure that the, the community looks and feels the way that, that we wanted to look and feel, and appreciate your participation in that process. That being said, let's jump into tonight's agenda. We have two agenda items and two items of business prior to jumping into those agenda items. The, the two items of business are related to minutes from prior meetings. We have our minute. We have our minutes from last month's meeting in January. We also have our minutes from November, the November 17th session that we want to make sure that we, we get those finalized and approved into, and into the record. So I'll open up by entertaining a motion for those that have had a chance to review those minutes and, and look them over for accuracy and content. I'll entertain a motion at this point to, to move those, to approve those minutes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve those minutes.
And specifically the minutes for both, for both meetings.
Correct.
Just to clarify your motion. Okay, thank, thank you, Jason. Do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Justin. All in favor, please indicate. I'll, I'll be looking at the screen to see your vote. Looks like we've got one, two, three, four, five, five eyes. Anyone not in favor? I can't see you, Jason.
Aye.
Okay, so that's six eyes. Thank you. We'll now jump into our, our formal agenda, the, the two items that we'll be going into. And, and let me just scroll down here. The, the first item is the historic design review for a property located on 167 North Commercial Street. This is an item that we briefly addressed last month. We did not have a complete application with all the information. The staff was recommending that we look at in consideration of this project. That's now been received. It's been included in the packet. I, I want to just turn it over quickly. Staff, if, if you wouldn't mind sharing a couple of thoughts on, on what's transpired in the, the past month as far as what's been received by the applicant. And then we'll, we'll discuss, we'll, we'll discuss the, the review for the sign that they're wanting to put up at this property.
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. Let me pull it up one second. I, I believe it's included in your packet, the, the sign details. We were able to get ahold of the applicant and they were able to provide some more of the details as far as the square footage of the sign and the types of materials that will be used and the lighting, all the things that you, you look at as you're reviewing the sign. And I believe the applicant is present. And so planning commission can ask them or direct any questions they may have towards them. In general, the, the sign, the fishing sign is the, the company logo and is, is made out of a, an aluminum metal. And it's not internally or externally lit. And fits the general, you know, general context and nature of the, the sign code for the historic overlay.
Thank you, Weston. So we, we, based on that overview, we're seeing that the proposed sign is compliant with the design guidelines for, for a property located in the historical commercial overlay zone. That being said, what other, I, well, before we're doing that, and maybe I'll open it up to the applicant. If, if you have any comments that you would like to share as part of this discussion.
Um. It looks good.
All right. No, I don't have any other comments.
Thanks, Mauricio. If, if, we know you're there, if we have other questions. So commission members, let's take this on. What other questions do you have with respect to the, the proposed sign? And how that fits in with the requirements of the commercial overlay district?
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Right here, we only, we have the design of the fishing, the Morgan Fishing Company sign. The coffee shop sign, we're not, we're not entertaining an approval for that one. We're only doing the fishing. Is that accurate?
It is accurate. The, the coffee shop sign has already gone through this process.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
We might need to do some clarification with the applicant because it's my understanding that there's a second coffee shop sign and the Morgan Fishing sign that the grounds for coffee is there, but the coffee shop and Morgan Fishing sign, I believe, is what they're proposing.
Okay, that is a good clarification. I thought we were just looking at the Morgan Fishing sign. Mauricio, can you just clarify for us?
Yeah, so we, it's actually for both signs.
So I'm glad you asked that question, Justin. Great, great question.
I think my only follow-up would be, I know we have it in the documents here that show that, that design laid out very well. It does look good, Mauricio, from that, from that standpoint. The coffee shop sign, I'm assuming that, in addition to the words, I, I just don't, other than this particular picture here, we don't have another version or example in the documents, but it appears it's the words coffee shop and then the logo for grounds for coffee in the bottom right-hand corner. Is that accurate?
Yeah, that's accurate. Yeah, that's accurate. I don't know if you guys heard me.
We did. Just a follow-up question on that. Why, why do you want another coffee shop sign there? You know, the, the building itself has, has the signage already.
One of the main reasons is because of the, where the signs are situated on the breezeway. There is the side entrance on that building. So the side entrance on that building can also be accessed by people who are going to the coffee shop or the fishing store. So we wanted to show that you can still access both of the companies through going through that breezeway as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, another follow-up question. Would we need to have a more detailed example of that coffee shop sign, or is this sufficient for our purposes here tonight?
I'll let staff weigh in on, on the requirements for that. The, the question that I would have is, why? Why, why change the design, look and feel? Why not put the same, the same sign you already have on the building? It's already gone through the process and, and matches the look and feel of the, the brand for grounds for coffee and put that there. Instead of making the words coffee shop so prominent, it feels like that'd just be more consistent and, and clean. And then we wouldn't be having this discussion because it's already been approved once. But, but Weston, if you want to weigh in on, on the, the specifications and what the staff's received with resp- with respect to this application.
Yeah, so the, the code requires the sign for us to look at the sign material, the, the colors, the lettering and the illumination. And although it is nice to have detailed renderings of the signs, and sometimes we need that based on what's being presented. In this case, we can, you know, see the lettering and, and that it's plain, you know, plain and simple to read. It is hard to make out the logo, but we can identify that the grounds for coffee logo is there. The, the colors are apparent and they've provided the information for square footage and for illumination. So i- in general, it's enough for, for planning commission to review it and make the recommendations. I think the comment regarding, you know, you know, part of the, the sign is to match the building and to match the surrounding signs. And so making the comment towards the second coffee shop sign matching more similar to the existing sign is, I, I think that's applicable.
It feels less cluttered instead of having three different, you know, within a, a quick glance, having three different logos and, and depictions of the coffee shop. What, what other questions are out there?
Mr. Chair, is, is there illumination for the fishing sign? I don't see it.
Weston indicated that it was not internally lit or externally lit. It's an aluminum sign on its own.
That is correct.
Yeah, because I'm looking at the grounds for coffee. I can see the two gooseneck. You think that's what those are? And tell for four lights over that sign, but for their requirement for it to be lit up at night or is that optional to, to the tenant or the owner?
They can do external illumination if they would like. They do not have to illuminate.
So from my standpoint, when I look at this application and, and Justin, I'm, I'm really glad you asked your question because that, that helps change the course of my discussion a lot. So appreciate that. With, with both of these signs, the, the Morgan Fishing Coffee Shop standalone feel like they, you know, especially based on staff's recommendation that they're compliant with the ordinance. And, and so on their own, they, they feel, you know, it feels good. The, the only concern I have with this is just the consistency of the coffee shop sign with the, the actual coffee shop and the signs that are already on it. And, and that's, you know, from a, a look and feel standpoint, it just feels like there should be more continuity with, with, with the three, with the three signs. I, I guess the ones, a window placard, not necessarily a sign, but at least with the two signs. That, that's just a, a feeling as I'm looking at this, thinking, you know, the, the, the spirit of the ordinance, having the historical overlays that it, that it matches, you know, the, the look and feel of, of what we're trying to accomplish in a historic district. And I'm, I'm not sure that taken together that it's doing that, even though it meets the requirements. It just feels a little, feels a little in your face with the, the, the way that that coffee shop sign is, is depicted in this picture. Again, just giving some thoughts on that, Mauricio. I don't know if you're involved in the, the coffee shop design as well, but is that something that you've looked at, are there options for that? Or is that what you've settled on and you want to, you want to push that through?
I'm primarily in the fishing store. But I know that it was a collaborative effort between us and grounds for coffee, just as we, because both of our businesses are going to be able to benefit from each other's consumers and like, if we're able to help them get more clients and we're, and they're able to help us get more clients, we just see it as a collaborative effort to work together and push both of those signs through because it does, the coffee shop symbol, I mean, it's not the symbol, but the wording, it does, it is more prominent to the coffee shop, but it's all, the reasoning behind that is that it hopefully attracts traffic that can also be seen when they're driving by Commercial Street on the freeway and they look towards that direction.
I'm definitely seeing the, the consumer benefit of indicating what can be accessed by entering the breezeway. I think that makes perfect sense. Let, let me just open it up to others on, on the commission and a- am I alone in that concern? Is that something that, you know, is, is just an opinion and shouldn't be, shouldn't be part of the conversation? Or, or do we have a representative at all from, from grounds for coffee that, that's also been involved in the design? I, I'm, I'm just confused that, as what we're trying to do with that one.
Mr. Chair, I would, I would share the same concern, not, not with the fishing sign. But I think where we're trying to, you know, bring this attractive look and feel to the entire Commercial Street that we have, this is an important, least issue to raise, even if we do recommend it based on and meeting the requirements for the sign. But as we, if we did move to recommend it, that at least there was a note that we feel like there could be better continuity between the signs that are there to best make this appear as, as good and coordinated as possible.
Thank, thank you, Justin. Weston, I'm curious then, with respect to how we move forward with something like this. I, I, we don't have, it doesn't sound like a representative from grounds for coffee here. Mauricio's representing the Morgan Fishing side. They're sharing the, you know, this collaborative space. As we look at what actions we take, you know, we can, we can approve the signs as is, we can approve the one, as I understand it, that the Morgan Fishing sign and, and potentially ask them to, to come up with a, a different design for the second coffee shop sign. I imagine we could take that action. What, what, what are our options as we look at this proposal?
Yeah, I think you, you've covered them really well. You, you could also recommend what you're liking, you know, what you're wanting to see. I think Mauricio's desire to have coffee shop have large letters that can be seen from further away is, is reasonable. But we've got a black background that there could be a recommendation from the commission to, you know, match the colors more closely to the, the other sign and use browns instead of, instead of a black. You could, you know, you could avoid that and just say, please bring us some options that match more significantly, you know, to what that is there, what, what's already there and approve the Morgan Fishing. Yeah, I, I think you've covered it really well. You, you do have lots of different options and it is reasonable for you with the, the historic code to want that sign to manage.
And that may be something for us then as a commission to consider. As far as the prominence of the letters be, beyond Commercial Street, you know, I, I don't want to sound too skeptical, but I, I just don't think there's going to be much, uh, much to gain from a freeway passerby. You're going too fast. You're not looking at these signs in that detail. If you are, you're probably going to bump into the car in front of you. So th- these are not highway signs. That would be a very different type of, type of sign. So it really, you're, you're looking at the people driving on Commercial Street and it feels like because of that, that yeah, I, I like the idea of asking for maybe a, a different rendering that, that is more cohesive with what's already there. Any other discussion on this before we, we take action? Questions for Mauricio, always, always with us.
Nate, just a, a, a clarification. Who owns the breezeway?
I do not know that.
Jeff Matthews owns the breezeway and he's the one that owns the grounds for coffee building.
Okay, so you would have permission to put the signs up then?
Yeah, we have permission from him to put the signs up.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mark Francis again. Being new to this, exactly where is the Morgan Fishing retail space? Where, where's the shop?
Mauricio, will, will you address that?
Yeah, so on the back third of that building, air, it used to be the salon, it used to be. that building, air, it used to be the salon. It used to be nail area. So it's gone through multiple uses, but it's on the back third is where we have, uh, where we're going to have the fishing store.
So, so the rear part of the ground for fishing?
Yeah, the rear portion of the grounds for coffee building. And it could be accessed, the fishing store can be accessed through three different doors. The main entrance for grounds, the side entrance on the breezeway and the backside, um, which has parking.
Okay, okay. I, I wasn't clear on that. Thank you.
Yeah, no worries.
Any other questions?
Well, this is where the salon was at. Is that right? Is there still a little conference room in the middle? Is that right, Mauricio?
Yeah, so there's a little conference room in the middle that the, it's turned into like a boutique. So they sell some clothing out of there.
That's what they had a hair salon or something. That's where you're going to be occupying, is that?
Yeah, yeah, we've retrofitted all of it too. I mean, you can go in there now and you'll see the store about eighty percent complete.
Good clarification. Thank you.
This is Dan. I, I have a quick, uh, comment as, as I look at that and I see the fishing sign on the left and the coffee shop on the right. It gives me the impression after Mark got that clarification that we're going to the building on the left instead of the building on the right. I don't know that that's, uh, really critical to the sign discussion and what we discussed there, but it could be misleading to traffic coming to the business.
Correct. And to help remedy that, uh, just because we do not have like our own door that's on Commercial Street, we're going to be adding some A frames to help with, uh, guiding customers as they see the sign and they, they'll see the A frame that points them. About two or three of them that point them on how to get into the fishing store.
Jim, you look deep in thought.
Have those, uh, sandwich boards been approved by staff or talked to staff about that? I guess is I don't know. You know, I know we had a big discussion about those there for a while, but sandwich boards or A frames on premise, off premise. Or exists with Paul, this meat code or would it not be code?
Can staff comment on that?
Yeah, um, I'll have to look that up. Honestly, I've not addressed that question. So unless Steve knows off top of his head, I'll just need a couple of minutes to find the answer.
Thank you, Weston.
Yeah, and I don't recall the final determination we made in the, in the historic zone. I know in other places, um, we don't allow them on the sidewalk, but we'd have to see if there's any specific thing within the historic district.
And, and thank you as well. Regardless of the outcome of that, that inquiry, it's, uh, uh, which needs to be complied with as well. It's tangential to the, the applicant's request with the two signs that we're looking at. So just keep that in mind, Mauricio, whatever the answer is, you'll wanna ma- make sure there's compliance with that with respect to the two signs. Are we at a point where we, we can take action and, and feel comfortable with, with, uh, moving forward one way or another? Again, our options, uh, we, we can approve both as is. Uh, we can deny them both. We can approve one uh, and deny the other or approve one and maybe not deny it, but, but rather, you know, let's look at some different renderings. Those are some of the options that, that we can take uh, with respect to this. This is not a, a uh, an item that needs to be sent on to the city council. We can make the approval or denial right here, right now, uh, as, as this body. So, uh, if, if you're forming your motion, you can use that language.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just hop in while you guys are deliberating on that. Um, the sandwich board signs aren't, are not permitted, just as Steve said, on sidewalks. So if there's specific placement of that, the applicant can work with staff and maybe we can come to something that, that may work for them, but in general, those types of signs are, are not permitted on sidewalks.
And that, that works for us as well. I mean, we'll have wayfinding done some other way and make sure that we can get that approved before we, you know, put stuff like that in place.
And Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Well, this is a quick question, I guess, for Wes as well. So could a sign, uh, an A frame sign, type of sign, could it be, could, want to be located back in the breezeway by, by the side door? Off the sidewalk, but down the breezeway by the door. Directing them into that door.
Yeah, let me, uh, let me pull up the code and read the, the stipulation on it. Okay, um, I'm just going to go through the code here. Um, and, and actually I might have rewritten, I might have misread this. Sandwich or menu boards that stand on the sidewalk are allowed. These are to be next to the curb with or within the recessed entranceway. They may be no larger than four feet in height and two feet in width and must be insured a four foot up, uh, that there is not a four foot obstruction path along a pedestrian walkway. So I'm glad you rerouted back up because I'm, I just misread it the first time. So they are permitted.
There we go. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I believe, um, Mr. Aket had a comment that he's trying to make.
I'm at a point where I can make a recommendation and we can kind of gauge where the body is at. If you, if you want me to make that motion, I can do that now.
Uh, well, you, you can make the, the motion of your own free will, not, not based on my dictates, but yes, I would love to entertain a motion, Jason.
Great. Then I'd like to make a motion that the planning commission approved the request for the proposed signs located at one sixty seven North Commercial Street.
Do we have a second on this motion? Uh, no second, Jason. The, the motion fails or dies. Thank you. Uh, do we have a, an alternative motion that someone would like to make with respect to this application?
Mr. Chairman, I'll take a crack at that. I, I make a motion that we approve the Morgan fishing sign, uh, one sixty seven.
We have a motion on the table to approve the Morgan fishing sign. Uh, is there a second on this motion? I heard a second from, uh, thing Mark. I heard you loud and clear. Uh, we'll, we'll credit you with the second. Any, any discussion on this motion before we vote?
I think the discussion, Mr. Chair, if I may, is, is on the, on the second sign. We, we handle that separately on our recommendation?
Well, that, that would be, you know, if we're not going to include it in the motion, then I would, I would ask for a second motion to address that sign because we, 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 it was part of the application. We didn't address it in this motion. Or, yeah. And who, who made the motion? Was that? Mark, Dan, Dan, you made it. Yeah, so if, um, if, if you'd be willing to accept an amendment to your motion, uh, you know, based on what, what you would like, uh, with the coffee shop sign. Then, you know, feel free to propose that and, and we'll see if Mark still seconds it.
Yeah, sure. I'm, I'm willing to, to see that. That, that'd be great. So Justin, what would you like to amend that proposal? For the motion?
I would amend it to have, um, or request additional renderings of that coffee shop sign. So not, not denying the request, but asking for, uh, additional renderings that may suit a more cohesive look to that building front.
I'll second that amendment.
So I want to make sure Dan accepts it. I, I see his head.
I accept that motion. Thank you.
And Mark, you, you still second that?
Yes.
Uh, thank you. Any further discussion on the motion, which now includes approval of the Morgan fishing sign as proposed? And a request for additional renderings of the coffee shop sign with respect to, uh, you know, more of a cohesive look to the, the existing signage. Uh, so that's the motion on the table. Any other discussion prior to voting? Uh, let's go ahead and vote. Um, with the screen sharing, I'm going to have to scroll to see everybody's, uh, hands, but let me see if I can get everybody in my view. I can only see six people at a time. Here we go. I gotta figure it out. All right, all in favor of the motion, uh, please indicate. That's one. Mark's an eye, Justin's eye, Jim, Dan, Jason. It looks unanimous. Uh, so motion passes. Mauricio, the fishing signs approved and asked that, that you come back with additional renderings for the, uh, for the coffee shop sign. Thank you. We will now move to our second agenda item. And, uh, let me, let's get to the, the right spot here. This is, uh, a, a twofold, uh, request that, that we're entertaining tonight with respect to a project located at two fifty four North State Street. This is the Riverview Apartments with a proposal to amend the plat for this apartment complex. Uh, and to do that requires a rezone, uh, which would be, uh, rezoning a portion of, uh, the commercial general property, uh, or zone to a multifamily RM fifteen zone. And that requires a public hearing. We have a number of folks here, uh, as, as, as part of the public. We, we thank you for your interest in our community and your involvement in, in the process. Uh, so thank you for that. You'll have an opportunity to, uh, to share as part of this process. As we get into this, uh, what, what will the, the order and how we'll proceed will go like this. Uh, before we open the public hearing, this will require a motion and ask that a member of the commission uh, make that motion. Uh, once the public hearing is open, uh, we'll proceed in the following order. Uh, we'll, we'll hear from staff first. And I get an overview of the project and, and perspective on what, what's before us today. At that point, we'll transition to hearing from the applicant, uh, to share additional details about the project itself. Then we'll open it up to members of the public. When we get to that point, uh, what I would ask is, uh, please keep your, your comments, uh, succinct, uh, one to two minutes. Uh, share your, your key, uh, your key message, key thought. Um, and, uh, and, and we'll kind of go to that point. We'd ask that, that you make all your points at once and, you know, we're not going to continue to, to circle around and around. I'm coming back to the, to the mic. And if something's already been addressed in the public hearing, it's noted and it's part of the record. And so we don't need to readdress some of those facts that, that have already been shared. So we'll, we'll proceed in, in that, uh, in that manner as we go through this next, this next phase of our meeting. Uh, but again, we, we need to open up the, the public session before, uh, before proceeding.
Mr. Chair, before that happens, um, for the record, I do need to declare a potential conflict of interest for myself on this, uh, particular item. Um, I do have a relation to the current property owner for that plot of land. As far as this particular, uh, recommendation goes, this is just, this is a rezoning recommendation. I don't feel that my involvement will be hindered in any way with that particular relation with the owner of this property. Um, there is no financial benefit for me directly or, uh, anything of that matter, but for the record, I would like to just make that disclosure.
Uh, Justin, thank you for disclosing that conflict of interest. It's noted.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, open the public portion of the hearing.
Uh, thank you, Jason. Now, I, I just had a, a, a mental freeze here. I think, I don't think we need a second on, on opening a public hearing. We can just declare it open, correct? Thank you, Steve. Uh, we do need a second. Thank you. All right, we're, I'm looking at sign language, so, uh, we do need a second on this motion. And Jim, you're holding up a number two. Does that mean you're, you're seconding this?
Yes, because, because you called for motion, you could have declared it open, but since you called for motion, I'll second that.
Thank you. And thank you for keeping me straight. It, it ta- it takes all of us. I appreciate that. All right. We, we now are in our public hearing phase of, uh, of our evening. And I would like to start as, as indicated earlier with staff uh, kicking things off with, uh, with perspective and context regarding this particular project. Uh, so staff, if, if you'll go ahead and, and, uh, and introduce this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, as stated, what is before you, uh, Mr. Chair and Planning Commission members is a rezone request and a plot amendment request. Uh, the plot amendment request, as you can see, would shift into two different zones, um, hence the reason for the rezone request. This would be moving, um, increasing the RM fifteen zone and decreasing the commercial zone that's on this property. The applicant is intending to, uh, use the, the, so we have the existing property at two fifty four State Street, which is a house. It's operating as a house, uh, being rented out, I believe. And it will continue to operate that way, uh, is my understanding. Shrinking this use would mean, uh, there would be room for another multifamily building to be constructed. It also put the house in a, uh, small office, um, format. So right now, the, the square footage of the lot would allow for a small commercial pad. However, without the two fifty north is a private lane and there is not, my understanding, um, is there's not existing access for two fifty four to have access off of two fifty north. And so what you're dealing with is a commercial property that if it was reworked, uh, from a house to something else, UDOT would want to close off that access point. And so we're, we're in a, we're in a position where this property, not that they couldn't gain access, um, from that two fifty north, but they would have to work with the existing applicant, um, to get access to that. So currently, um, the, the proposal would mean that this house would shrink to a, a small commercial pad and would likely function as a office, um, a small, um, scale office, which is about a ten thousand square feet, just over ten thousand square feet, which is an allowed use within this zone. Um, I'm happy to entertain any questions that the commission may have.
With respect to that access point off of two fifty north, uh, regardless of what decision is made as, as far as a, a favorable or unfavorable recommendation to the city council, would that need to be addressed anyway? Uh, with the property owners as part of any further development of, of that two fifty north property right now where it's a residential use, but, uh, it, it, you know, once, once that house comes down, it's only option is commercial. And at that point, wouldn't this need to be addressed either way?
Yeah, it, so they're currently separate owners. The applicant is proposing to purchase the home um, and then do this plot amendment. I- if this didn't go through or the applicant decided to just not do this, um, and then in the future, this commercial property, uh, the house was raised and, and a commercial plot was landed. They would have to work with the existing owner of two fifty north to gain access because UDOT would want to close off the current access.
Thank you. The the other thing that you'd mentioned that I I was curious about uh, with with the reduction in this, you know, proposed amended plat, uh, you know, changing it from, you use the term, I think, uh, an office, uh, an office plat versus, you know, a regular commercial. What what makes that distinction? What changes there? Is there an official uh, size that that has to be hit before that changes?
No, it it really is just based on what you can fit on the property. So y- you look at the the property and it's got about just over ten thousand square feet. And on that size of property, you're not going to get much parking. And it's our retail users that usually use most parking or our fast food users that would require a drive-through. Tho- those more auto-dependent or auto-heavy users are not gonna find place here. It'll it'll be an office where there's not a high parking demand because they're gonna have to meet landscaping requirements. If that house is ever removed and put something else down, uh, they'll have to meet parking requirements. And it's just not large enough to to meet retail. Generally, that's not a one hundred percent, but in general, it it would be a harder retail fit than it would be a general office fit.
So as far as potential commercial uses by shrinking that lot size, it it limits those options.
Yeah, yeah, it it's still, uh, it, we're just talking about land uses, but yes, it would just be a uh, a limited land use that could could fit in there versus a a broader commercial use.
Thank you. What other questions for staff before we move on to the applicant? Well, we know how to get a hold of you, Wes. We have other questions. Um, but let's move to the applicant. We want to hear from from them regarding this project. And uh, if you can share your thoughts and and any details that you can, you can share to help us as we deliberate on this recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is George Ash Ward. I just want to make sure you can hear me and I'm good to go ahead and explain it.
We can hear you. Proceed.
Great, thank you. I was gonna jump on earlier and make sure Mar- Mauricio had the right fishing supplies that we were gonna need in the store, but uh, no, this is a, this is the interesting piece of property and we're excited to to see what what we can come up with. But uh, it currently that pasture, I guess, the piece behind two fifty north there, you can see, or two fifty-four is used as a horse pasture, which doesn't really fit in with uh, with the surrounding area. And the other issue which was addressed, and we've discussed several options with Wes on this is the current house or the the front commercial piece is a is a house. But uh, we, for for intents and purposes, we plan to leave that as a single-family resident for now and not change the use. But uh, Wes is absolutely right. If we do change the use on that, then they're gonna want a different access. And part of our negotiations or discussions with Wes is we would grant an access, a permanent access easement off of two fifty, which is a private lane, um, owned by us in the rear of that to make more additional parking for a potential office. There has to be a little bit of give and take and everything. And so the way, I guess what we bring to the table for this to make sense is, yeah, we're making the commercial partial parcel or the commercial piece smaller, making the residential or multifamily residential bigger, but we're also making the commercial use have value. Once it's changed to commercial use, as long as the use isn't changed as we know, it's the driveway is gonna be off of Highway sixty-six there with no issues. But once that's changed, then that then that commercial piece really doesn't have a value unless it hasn't has access off of the private lane there, which we would be willing to grant should this uh, should this be approved. Um, and then obviously that horse pasture would go away. And uh, it would match, what our intent is to match what's there at eighty-eight east there behind a couple more units and uh, and make the property. I I think it's the best option for that piece of property. And then the last thing I would like to just make mention of is, as you look at that, uh, what's on your screen there, you can see where that commercial line comes through and it is as best they could, they tried to match it with what was existing. But you can see that uh, it it was it's kind of a swath instead of uh, instead of matching the individual parcels. And so for us, it's like this should have been, i- it looks like that should have been done that way anyway. But it would have been hard to decide whether it was gonna be commercial or not, or not at the time they were they were making that general commercial uh, separation between general commercial and and that RM fifteen zoning. So this just, for us, it makes sense, but obviously we're we have an interest in building a few more uh, units right there. So that's the project. Anything else? Just have to ask me and we can tell you.
Yeah, thank you, George Ash. Uh, just a couple of things. One, uh, with with respect to any rezone type of request, uh, you really want to give consideration to what's called for and outlined in the general plan. In this case, both commercial and RM fifteen are appropriate. And and so there's no conflict uh, with respect to the general plan that's in place with with this particular project. I do have one question for you, though, George Ash, just based on how you'd you'd frame this. And I I want to make sure I'm I'm hearing this right, but with you being the uh, the the property owner of of two fifty north, uh, granting access to your own interest is is uh, is a given, right? Uh, so that that part of the project wouldn't be a challenge. Now, that's that's assuming a favorable recommendation. And and I guess the question is, um, you know, does that the does that same openness for negotiation, you know, with a future uh, property owner, if this is not approved? Uh, you know, I'm I'm curious what type of stance you'd be willing to entertain, uh, you know, for access off of two fifty north? If uh, if if the project, uh, you know, this this recommend, you know, your your proposed project doesn't fly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I guess I need to to ask the question to understand the question. Are you talking about rear access to the, if we were to make that front commercial property smaller? Are you saying, are you asking whether we would grant access if someone else owned that? Because I'm saying when we, when we amend the plat, we would uh, record a permanent access easement to the to the to to the two fifty-four commercial property. And obviously, we already have access to the rear. Now, if someone else were to come in and want to buy the rear property, I guess, is, are you asking about the piece that we want to make RM fifteen or the commercial piece?
I I'm asking more about the commercial piece. And in other words, the the way that I heard it could be interpreted that, you know, we we can hold, we can hold the property owner hostage, the fact that if we, if we don't do this and and approve this, we're not going to grant access off of two fifty north. And therefore, it makes any project off two fifty-four, um, you know, that much more difficult to proceed. So I I I'm just trying to see and and hear from you on what openness you'd have regardless of the decision that we make on on granting access from two fifty north uh, to that commercial part of the process on two fifty-four, uh, whether or not that this plot amendment is made.
Yeah, we we would consider granting that. They wanted to share in the cost of the maintenance and the uh, obviously the, any cost of repairing it, we would consider that option.
And that's what I was asking, and that sounds reasonable. Thank you, George Ash. Uh, there before opening it up to the public, uh, what other questions for the the applicant do do we have?
George Ash, what property do you own right now? And will you be a a purchasing any based on the outcome of today?
Oh, we own the property basically to the rear of this two fifty-four and to the rear of the River Burger commercial property there, that, yeah, that hashed piece right there.
Okay.
And we are an applicant. Uh, but we have the right to represent through that, the signed form that we submitted with the prac, with the packet for approval, and we would be purchasing two fifty-four with the approval if this comes.
So you own the Riverview Apartments? You currently own them?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Got it. Thank you.
I think the only other question that I'd have, Mr. Chair, is just the timing of of the project, if this, if this was approved. If I could ask the applicant's that.
Sure. George Ash, can you comment?
The timing for what we would build there, is that the question, Justin?
Yeah, the timing on the um, the additional multifamily unit or whatever you have planned for that area.
Yeah, we were, we would move through the, I mean, obviously, we'd wait for the city council meeting if we were to get approval today, but we would move right ahead to try to get to the site plan and approval, which I'm saying would take another three to six months to get the city approval. But we would be looking at building like in starting in August, September would be our goal, uh, with the understanding that we're subject to city approvals and such.
I still have a question. I'm sorry, did I interrupt somebody?
Oh, go ahead, Jim.
I still have a question. So why, why, how did this come about, the the measurement? Why, why do we need to adjust this property line? What what does it do or what does it not do? The boundary, the adjustment.
Is that for me, Mr. Chair?
Um, I think it's more for you. In in other words, uh, why, um, you know, why, why are you proposing this in the first place? I guess is the question.
Uh, honestly, to to build some additional apartments there and to make the land usable as it sits, that piece kind of it kind of crosses the middle there and and for us, it was an adjacent fill. And oh, we looked at it and said, well, it would make sense to do this and make that a small commercial office. And we want to see if the city would entertain it.
Are you, are you, is this including the piece we put behind two fifty also, or the different piece we, between the apartments and two fifty-four? This is.
Just two fifty-four, the two fifty, the pace behind two fifty, I believe, is owned by.
So you're, so basically you need this additional piece to fit in the building that you're proposing with the parking, et cetera. Is that why I, yeah?
Exactly. Yep, it's a vacant field with.
So that, so if this gets approved, uh, we would see a similar building to what you already have there would be another, another building. That helps. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you. Just one more call for any any questions for the applicant before formally moving on. Well, at this time, let me uh, open it up to anyone else uh, here from the the community. Uh, this is a public hearing. We want to hear from you. And if if you can share your thoughts, again, just let me uh, share it as a couple of ground rules. One, come off mute, state your name, uh, so that we'll have that for the record. Again, share your thoughts succinctly as you can in in one to two minutes uh, and and wrap up. And then, um, you know, we'll, we'll move on to the next person. Uh, after which, once we've heard from everybody that wants to share, then we can uh, call out for any final comments before closing the public hearing, but we do want to hear from uh, from anyone that has something to say. So now is your chance. Uh, feel free to to jump in at this point.
Mr. Chair, this is Mark Walker. Uh, can you hear me okay?
We can proceed.
So as a general public member and as an adjacent property owner and as an owner of several properties in close proximity to this, as well as bounding this property, uh, I do have some interest in this and some and some concerns. I was involved in the, in the zoning of this, where we general plans on this, where we put the multi-housing in back of the commercial. This area generally back there between the commercial and the river was deemed prime property for multi-housing in the effect that there is no uh, regular housing, if you will, single-family homes or anything else that's really impacted there between the commercial and the river. So this was a great place to put commer, to put multi-housing. And as the owner of multi-housing back there, I can tell you that multi-ho- housing people love this piece because it is close to the city center, schools, access to State Street, and it is off of the main road. Driving back there, they love it because there is no thoroughfare through there. It's a great place to put apartments. And the people that live there love living there because they feel safe there. The river's not an impedent. The busy state street's not an impedent because there's buffer with the commercial. So as far as that goes, it's a great place to put apartments. My concern was is that in reducing the footprint of the commercial in the front did limit what could put there. But honestly, I think the Wordels have answered my question for me and that they are allowing access off of their east two fifty north street to be able to access that small piece. I know for a fact, and you've echoed the same thing, that when you want to come off of State Street, good luck with that. You dot's not gonna let you have that happen, especially for a small piece like this. Uh, they're just not in the, in they don't like to have multiple small entrance ways off of the major state street. They want to limit those accesses. So that would severely limit that, what you could work with on that small commercial piece. But by allowing access off of two fifty, their east two fifty north drive, it is to me a viable piece of property now, although it would be limited in scope of what could be there. I don't think McDonald's would be interested there, but perhaps a small office building would be interested, would be interested in that. With that said, I don't know if I said anything that hasn't already been said, but as a major property abutment owner, I really have no concerns for it. So that's my two cents. Thank you for listening to me.
Mark, thank you for that. Uh, other comments?
Yeah, this is Kim Sidwell, chairman.
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay. I own the building where the River Burger is. So as a couple of things, I'm not, I'm not so sure of. Um, I really don't think that the road going back is owned by the individual that uh, said he owns it. That needs to be checked into. the individual that, uh, said he owns it. That needs to be checked into, number one. I'm the one that did the development, uh, eighteen years ago. When I did the development, there was a duplex up front, if any of you've been around for a while, you'll remember that. I planned on putting apartments, uh, exactly where he's talking about, except where our building is. And at that time, eighteen years ago, as I was doing this, it, it was zoned for back a hundred feet, it was commercial, then after the hundred feet back was, uh, residential or multi, multi-housing. As I was in the process of this, they changed it to two hundred feet back. So that's where you see these odds and ends lines coming in back there. Is because at that time, they changed the zoning to a two hundred foot. So that forced me to change my plans and I'm the one that, um, went through the ci- with the city, took me about a two-year process to get those, uh, four, fourplexes approved. And at that point, I could not, um, put those, uh, multi, uh, units forward of two hundred feet and I thought, well, this is not such a good idea. And it was me thinking that. Now, eighteen years later, I think that it was a brilliant idea. I think it was very wise of the city, they, they got a hold of the, the city planner, the, they brought in a city planner, et cetera, et cetera. And they decided two hundred feet back for, uh, beyond the two hundred feet for the multi-residential. And that the first two hundred feet would be, um, for businesses. And everybody's, a number of people have said about that house sitting there, that, um, to be used for commercial in, as an office space. And you can see the problem there. And that problem will exist all the way across. As each place goes across and all of a sudden someone takes out two homes and they want, say that they buy two homes and they want to put, um, multi-units behind where those two homes are, and then they're gonna attempt to build commercial property out on State Street. It's gonna really jeopardize Morgan's ability to have a real commercial type area in, in my feelings. I didn't, I was not happy eighteen years ago when they told me, sorry, you have to redo everything, but this is the new way. We're putting this two hundred feet back. And now I see the wisdom in it. And it is wisdom because all those houses will go away. You can see down by Ridley's, the house has gone away. You can see the houses, uh, up by where the bank was, they're gone away. All those houses will go away and if we permit, um, apartments or multi, multi-housing to be put just wherever, we are destroying the opportunity to make a, a really strong base for commercial business, because it will become that one day. You look at the number of homes that have been taken out in the last twenty years and it's, it's, uh, it's a large number. Since I put mine up, I mean, the gas station had come in at that point, the Ace Hardware, the building that we put in, the bank has been redone, the, the medical place has been redone, the place where the hardware store used to be, that's all been redone. And those are all in accordance with the two hundred feet back. And I just don't think it's wise, so that's my thoughts. And I, I'm not against growth. Don't get me wrong, I think, I think it's fine. We used to own the building across the street from the elementary school, that little, there's a little duplex there. And when I sold that to the individual, I told him, I don't even know who I sold it to, I says, a smart thing to do would be to put another building here, that would be a wise thing to do to make this a, a much better place. So it's not that I have a thing against having multi residential housing, it's just the idea, if you do this, it will take away opportunity five years down the road, ten years down the road, fifteen years down the road. Those houses will all be gone one day, so. If anybody has any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer.
Cam, thank you for sharing your thoughts, I appreciate the input.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can, Gene, just, just one moment and then you'll have the floor.
Okay.
I, I wanted to, uh, I wanted just to comment on one part, uh, with Cam and recommend that, uh, that you reach out to the, the, the city to resolve. Uh, you know, if there's, if there's any dispute that you sense with respect to the ownership of two fifty North, that you work with the, work with the city to resolve that. It sounds.
Yeah, and if I remember, when I did the, uh, project, I put that road in and, and made an easement for thinking that it would, one day, there'd be another building like ours or something along that line that we could use that access into. And I'm quite confident when I did the, uh, had somebody, I didn't do it, obviously, had somebody do it, that I actually have the ownership-ish, I don't know what to, to what degree of that road. And I was, I granted access back to those apartments. So I, I'm absolutely positively sure that the apartments do not own that road.
So the, the purpose of tonight's session is not to necessarily resolve that, but, uh, but it sounds like.
Yeah, correct, I understand.
Resolve that with the, the city and ma- and make sure you're clear.
Yep, perfect.
Thank, thank you for, for weighing in, appreciate your thoughts. Uh, Gene Carter, uh, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you very much. My name is Gene Carter. I own the property next to the post office at one ninety-eight State Street. Uh, as far as what's happening here, uh, there are many studies that have been done that show that uh, commercial property pays the bills, residential property drains the treasury. So anytime you eliminate commercial property, you're taking a plus and making it a negative. Uh, the, the prime property, commercial property is behind tractor supply, and now that's all gonna be condominiums. So it's, it's the wrong thing to do at any time. Morgan is growing and growing fast and you don't have access to a lot of commercial property. You can't expand that, that much. So it's just basically wrong. Uh, as far as my personal interests concerned, uh, it really doesn't make that much difference because the more commercial that you eliminate increases the price of the commercial that's left. So by doing this, you will only increase my property value, but it's wrong. My comments, thank you very much.
And thank you, Gene, appreciate you sharing that. Does anyone else, uh, want to share as part of this public hearing? While you're pondering, uh, let, let me open it up at this point, we've heard from staff, we've heard from the applicant and we've heard from members of the community. Uh, are, are there any other comments or questions across any of these groups, uh, as far as tonight's public hearing is concerned?
Mr. Chair, seeing that I make the motion that we close the public hearing.
Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second that motion.
All right, motion seconded. Um, Steve, forgive me, I'm gonna ask, do, do we vote on this? I've given that, uh, that the nature of the motion.
Yeah, you will vote on that, on that motion and since it did not contain a second motion, then the commission can go ahead and have a discussion before makes its, its next motion.
Perfect. Uh, let, let's go ahead and vote on the, the motion in play to close the public hearing, all in favor, please indicate. I need to make my view bigger, I see Jim, Justin, myself, our eyes. And there's Dan, Jim, and Jason, it's unanimous to close the public hearing.
And Mr. Francis.
Yes. Uh, sorry, I missed that, uh, Jim, you were saying something.
Mr. Francis was also an eye.
Mr. Francis, thank you, I, I, I did see that, thanks for acknowledging, uh, motion passed unanimously. At this point, the public hearing is closed and it is now, uh, an opportunity for the commission to deliberate on the proposal at hand. And so at this point, let's, uh, hear your, uh, concerns, questions, uh, with respect to this proposed project. I see Jason's hand up, Jason, you have the floor.
I've gotta say, that was the best, since I've been on the planning commission, that was the best segment, the commentary from the owners, the plans, the historical, the context. That was the best segment that I've ever been involved in, in my tenure here. Uh, I loved it. And I share every single person's sentiment. I support multifamily growth in that area. And I support commercial property being so valuable. And could this be potentially a better use in a hundred years from now? And I also support best use currently, I mean, it's like, you know, hey, if I have to do something with something right now, I can build something right now. I don't know what the commercial use is best in seventy-five years, right? And so this was just a fascinating segment to me. And, um, I don't, I don't see that I can really steer this one way. I wish, I think this is a case where if I could show in a hundred years the best use of that property and, 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 and tell the proposal for the multifamily, this is a bad idea. I would love to have that wisdom and share that with them, but I don't. And them being within the confines and wanting to grow their own units, I support them. And so this has just been fascinating and based on the staff recommendations, I, I would probably give the applicants what they wish. I would probably vote for that at least. And just a fascinating case in my opinion, and I would love future planning for the commission to have a way to just, I mean, here we are, we're faced with, this is such a dynamic moment. And I, I just, I'm fascinated by it and I wish it were more succinct in the response and I, I support many angles here.
Thank you. This one's, this one is unique, I, I would agree. A, a couple of considerations that I wanna throw out there. Uh, one, and this, this has been mentioned, but I think it's worth repeating. There's a question in the working session, is there precedent, uh, to where we've made some of these changes in the past? And the answer was yes, uh, one was behind tractor supply, uh, the other one, uh, was over by the apartments, by the bowling alley. And, and, and in my mind, there's, there's a couple of distinctions there. The general commercial zone that extends, uh, you know, through the central business district of Morgan, along State Street, along Commercial Street, and then down that road that, that the bowling alley is on. Now, what we've seen in, in practice over the years has been a continued growth in commercial across, uh, the State Street properties. And, and we're, we're preserving and trying to revitalize, and we've heard tonight from a different applicant and, and some of the projects going on on Commercial Street. The bowling alley road has not seen that transition and has, has really maintained and persisted in its residential use. And, and along those lines, uh, making that change, I think, made sense to, uh, reduce the commercial uh, uh, footprint in, in, in the, the, the central business district area. This one I have some hesitation with because, you know, it could be, to your point, Jason, a hundred years from now, seventy-five years from now, it could be next week. And, uh, my, my concern is, is that with commercial property being such a premium and, and this being a critical, uh, part of our city center to reduce the options, uh, over what might be expedient today to add to an already existing project. And, and by the way, it is a good project, a comment was made that people love to live there and it's a great, uh, a, a great development. I, I agree with that. It doesn't necessarily, you know, mean that there's a mandate to, to make it bigger. Now, it, it could, and if that works out, then, then so be it. But it, it feels like, you know, we need to really be thoughtful into what can happen as, as we look at not just this parcel on its own, but in conjunction with, you know, with, with what can happen to this commercial development. You know, if we change this property size and then the adjacent property now, uh, you know, i- if there has to be a combination of, of those two owners selling to each other and, and now there's a, a, a funky, um, you know, plat that they're working with. Does it, it change the ability to, uh, to, to develop these commercial properties? We heard earlier, uh, from staff that, that definitely limits some of those options, uh, where we might be looking for, not we, but, but the, the developer might be looking to do something with retail or restaurant. And, and those options are almost automatically excluded by cutting into this property as much as we are. And it, yes, it could be an office and that's still a commercial, but is that, is that the vision for, uh, for what we wanna be building in the, in the city center, uh, like this? And, and what we've set aside the land use for, uh, yes, it's residential today, I, I get that and it could be for some time. But I, I don't want to, uh, necessarily make a short-term decision just because we can do it now as opposed to not knowing what's gonna happen down the road, and I think we need to be thoughtful about that. That's a few thoughts from my standpoint, what, what other thoughts are out there?
Mr. Chair, I have a question on, and this might be one for, for West, and, um, on that commercial property, is there any ability to do dual-use, um, residential and commercial on that? In that commercially zoned area, or is it only one or the other at this point for our, for mixed zoning?
Yeah, it's a good question. Currently, it would be a single use as we're going through the general plan amendment. Um, that is something that we're gonna discuss, uh, bringing in mixed uses and what mixed uses look like. And that will also inform what type of codes we need to add to our, uh, our zoning code to allow for mixed uses. That is something that the city wants to, to look at, and this would be a great area for mixed use. But currently, it is a single use.
Now, Wes, just to clarify on that, if there's a home occupancy, it can be a mixed use, but only if the owner's living there, is that accurate?
Yeah, absolutely, you could have a home occupation there, um, and live there, for sure.
And, and actually Morgan has a provision in your ordinance, a little bit more than, than just a home occupation, it's called a live-work unit, and that's where, um, it used to be Karen's Creations, it's some teething, whatever, but anyway, wood is, is another option in that zone.
As a follow-up to that, that, uh, question, and thank you for the answers. Um, the concern that I'm hearing is, is the reduction, the commercial zone there. Does the positioning of the potential housing unit there? Does the positioning of the potential housing unit there, which way it's facing, have an impact for the future year use of that particular plot? Meaning that, is it, is it backing up against the existing one? So they're kind of back-to-back, or is it turned facing 250 north? Does that positioning, and I don't know if, if, if the applicants have an answer for that right now, but does that maybe help clarify some of those concerns on shortening up that commercial zone?
And Justin, can I just clarify your question? Are you talking about the orientation of the existing structure? And not necessarily the orientation of any proposed structure to replace it?
I am, I am actually saying the proposed structure on if that is rezoned to multifamily. The orientation of it facing out to 250 north, or the parking lot coming in from 250 north, and the building maybe being back-to-back with the existing building there.
So you're talking about the extension of their multifamily project, and not necessarily the commercial part of it?
Yes, in terms of, in terms of addressing the concern of shortening up the commercial zoning there.
George Ash, can you comment on, on that orientation?
Yes, I believe I understand the question. The, the, the proposed structure would face 250 north and access off of 250 north. Does that answer your question, Justin?
Yes, it does.
And, you know, you raise a good point about mixed use in general, though. And a few months ago, I think prior to your involvement in these meetings, we were more actively pursuing, looking at, as a commission, looking at different properties and, and jurisdictions outside of Morgan regarding mixed use, and trying to do some exploratory work to determine what might make sense if we were to create this type of use within Morgan City. Whereas you'd heard, we, we currently don't have that, but as part of our general plan revision, it's being explored as well. This is something I think there is interest in among the city, and want to make sure that, that it fits with, with the type of environment that we're looking for. You know, as we build out an ordinance to support that, so that the comment is timely. And, and something that I think, you know, can create more options. Again, still have some, some parking challenges, you know, some, some mixed use could be things like, you, you've got retail on the ground level, and then, then apartment lots on the second and third floors, which, which works really well. And, and, you know, Commercial Street, you, you can see that working well, too. So something like that, but you still have that retail, or whatever it is on the, on the ground level, and we still have the same parking challenges, potentially, depending on, on what that is. And it might even increase it, because now we've got residential and whatever commercial entities there. Good comment. Other thoughts with respect to some of the planning concerns with this proposal?
Yes, Mr. Chair, one other, I don't mean to take up all the time, but
That's what we're here for.
I think there is the question as well of what is allowed off State Street by the state, right? If you even had, say, 254 and 250 and 210, and eventually were turned into commercial, would the state even allow access to those from State Street? Where on the 250 north property or, or road that you have a unique situation there, where that's really the only option to come off State Street? And what would the state actually approve if, if it was turned over into commercially, commercial buildings? I think that's one interesting thing to explore.
It's, it's another good question, and I don't know that we've got representation from the state to give a definitive answer, but maybe someone from staff could offer an opinion, given other projects that have been overseen, like Tractor Supply and others that come off State Street.
Even though they're reluctant, if someone has current existing access onto a state road, you'd have to allow it. That doesn't mean that they would allow the necessarily width, the width that we necessarily would request. But they would somehow have to provide access, and they may negotiate with an abutting property owner to, to come up with a shared access, but they would still have that obligation.
All right, thank you. And I bring that up because 250 north is a unique street. It's, it's one that's existing that does allow access off State Street to get it off the busy road. It does not involve having to deal with the state.
Just involves dealing with whoever owns that, that lane. Which, which could be in dispute, we've learned tonight. All right, other, other commission members, what questions do you have with respect to this proposal?
Mr. Chair, this is Dan Dixon. Just got a question here. When I look at this line that runs close to north and south on this, on this grid, I'm wondering if we expand it out, does that continue on in a straight line? Does anyone know that?
Teresa, I don't know if you can zoom out on, on the, the map, if you can pull. I know this is in the packet, but if you go to the source, if you can show a zoomed-out view.
While she's looking at that, I'm, I'm wondering, the land use that's right adjacent to in the back of that, so what I see is that the one that's currently RM15, it's like a field, and it looks like horse property. And then right adjacent to that, beyond the apartments, is that, is that part of the, is that a field there as well? It looks like it's kind of open field right now.
And once, once that map's pulled up, we'll get a good view of those adjacent properties. Okay, so Dan, if you want to
Okay.
rephrase your, your question now that we can see a zoomed-out view.
Thank you. Okay, yeah, I think I see where, so, so my question was if that line just continues on straight. And it looks like it does for, for a good point, and then it makes a little jog down there to the, towards the south, towards the post office, if I'm following this right. Yeah, okay. I was just curious if there were other jogs in that. You can see that the land that the, some of the owners have is a little, extends on into the RM15. And I guess the question in my mind is, what, what are we going to do with that? What, what would the owner do with that RM15 piece that's there towards the back of their, their property? It seems like it doesn't quite fit. And if you turned it into, you know, commercial in the front, and you did use, utilize that space, then what's going to happen with that space in the back? Would someone be able to, to utilize that? It's just too small to, to do. I kind of like keeping all of the, all of the, the multi-units together there. I, I think that's kind of nice from a overall perspective, going in and out of there. And having, having those all together, I think that kind of wins, wins well.
Yeah, it's, it's a good question, where the, the property boundaries of those properties across State Street don't line up to that straight line that shows the, the zoning. And, and so every property owner is going to have a similar, depending on what they choose to do with it, going to have a similar dilemma. Either they're going to try to put part of their property into RM15, or part of their property into commercial. And, and then that, that nice even line is going to get jagged anyway. And, and the question is, you know, do, do we, do we favor commercial and, and extending that out, or do we favor the RM15? Because this is not going to be the last time this exact type of conversation comes before this commission, just by nature of where these property boundaries are.
Some of that, and it'll be determined by markets and economic considerations, too.
Yeah, it's a good point. Thank you. And given where, where we're at tonight, and of course, we'll all have an opportunity to weigh in on, on how we feel formally, once we, we take some action on this. But looking at that 254 project, and, you know, the piece that, that's wanting to be replatted is RM15, and, and part of the, the existing project that's there with the River View Apartments. It, it feels like, you know, rather than extending the, the RM15 into, into commercial, you know, the, the other direction would allow, you know, potentially more options on that front parcel that I think gives, gives a pulse for the, the future of the city, and, and what, what amenities and, and options, and, and whether it's office, retail, you know, restaurant, it's not as much a, a consideration for me as it is that there are options. And that it's not a foregone conclusion, that now we've, we've forced the hand of whatever comes there next. And we're, we're going to either have residential in perpetuity, or convert a residential property into an office as-is, or tear down the house and put in a small office unit. But it, but again, that's, that's all you've got. That's all you can do there forevermore. You know, unless we go through this process again. And, and so from my standpoint, I, I like the idea of being really careful in thinking through, in, in ensuring that the city, which has designated this as commercial property, wanting all commercial uses can continue to have all commercial uses be an option, and that we don't give up or forego those options just because we happen to have, you know, a reasonable notion on the table right now. And it is reasonable that it's a good project, this apartment project. And, and it's not, I don't have an issue with the project. It's more just thinking broader perspective than that. And that, that's kind of some of the things that keep going through my mind, but I, I want to hear from others as we deliberate. You know, this, this could have long-reaching ramifications, and it's not necessarily a foregone conclusion on what we do here. But I would like to hear other people's perspectives on the commission, and, you know, maybe any other questions that could be entertained to help with those, those opinions. That interactive map, Teresa, by the way, is really cool. I'm glad the city put, put that up on the website.
I was hoping that if we pulled this out just a little bit, you can see where the current general plan is shown, commercial, general, commercial, central, commercial highway. So that you can see the areas as long, as well as manufacturing. And then, of course, this is a zoning map, not the general plan.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Teresa, could you pull up that one map that you had up just a moment ago? It showed the, the boundary. I, I guess, Mr. Chairman, the only comment that I would make would be that, as you're deliberating this, and certainly, it's, it's your call, but I mean, the possibility would always exist that we may look at 254, 250, the one below 250, I can't see it on my screen, I can't read it.
10.
But, but, you know, possibility, just, I would think, bear in mind, the possibility may exist, somebody eventually may come in there and purchase all three of those properties, or two of those properties, or three of them, for the purpose of a commercial enterprise of some sort. So, you know, I, I don't, I don't have a crystal ball that broke, and if I do, but that's just, you know, something to consider as well.
A good consideration, that you're not limited to that lot size, even if we shrink it down now, because a developer could buy adjacent properties.
And in fact, I would, I would guess that almost would be what will happen eventually, but I, yet I don't.
Tony, you were cutting in and out just a bit, but I think we got the gist of it.
Just something to think about.
It's a good consideration, and that, that's why we're having this, this period of deliberation, so we can get these perspectives to help make an informed recommendation.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Mr. Akit has just commented and asked if staff has any change in recommendation after this discussion. And, and just to address that, I think everything that's been brought up is very applicable to the property. I think people are weighing the concerns of the commercial and the concerns of residential, and both are obviously needed in Morgan. It's important to have rooftops to support the commercial. Commercial is, although the city's growing, commercial's not growing like it used to, but commercial is crucial ground, and it's important to protect our commercial. And so I think everything that's been mentioned is critical and important. As, as of staff recommendations, I feel comfortable and confident in keeping the recommendation, but also supports planning commission and their, their determination as well.
I thank you for commenting on that, Wes. Appreciate that. We, we are at the point where some of the comments are slowing down a bit. I, I want to make sure that we have considered all the, the relevant facets of, of this proposal. You know, understanding the perspectives that we've heard, of course, with, with staff. You know, the applicants shared their perspective. We've heard from the public. We also have a, a stewardship to oversee the, the ordinances of, of how the land within Morgan City is used. And, and therefore, we're having this conversation now. That being said, are there other comments that we haven't considered? That haven't been brought up, that you've been thinking about, but a little hesitant to share, but, but might be valuable to consider? Please, please bring those up now so that we can take appropriate action and, and make a, a recommendation to the city council one way or another on this one.
Mr. Chair. If I may, the, the property just behind 250, the house, the pride home. I just, I'm guessing that's not adequate for a project, Russell would be talking about that probably. Yeah, that piece right there. Just nobody's built anything on it. I mean, it would be nice if that was wider, and you could build something, and you run the 200-foot line, and there's a road there off of 250 to access that. And then we are able to keep all of the, your point earlier, we would be growing the commercial, not growing the RM15. And it would run the clean line, looks like 198's already at the 200-foot mark. There's the line that would run. You can almost visualize when she, when she came out a little bit, you can visualize that black line going right across the back of the 198, up through the field. And then that would leave a road right there to access that. But obviously, that's not big enough to do anything, and all somebody would have done. Well, I don't know what we're doing with that piece of ground. Is that going to be landlocked for no use for, as far as RM15? We're going to be basically zoning, yep, right where she had her arrow there, that piece right there behind 250. We're going to be basically zoning yet right where she had her arrow there, that piece right there behind 250. What's that going to become? What does anybody envision that becoming?
The ownership of that property is the same as the multifamily that, yeah, right there that you have your mouse on. So without being in discussion with that property owner, I would assume that they have plans at some point to expand. But I'm making that assumption just based on property ownership.
What I'm just looking at is only one house with, obviously, the residents up front. So it's not real wide to put, I mean, maybe there is, I don't know. If we're talking about our duty, you know, collectively overall, what have we left there? A piece of, again, we're not the owners, but I'm just looking at, can we maximize the commercial? Or does that leave out the ground, unusable 115? That's the question, I guess. Going through my mind.
And honestly, that same question's, what's going through my mind as well? They're both valid points, and I think that's what's been discussed by a number of the perspectives that have been shared. Thank you, Jim. Anyone else want to add anything to this? Otherwise, I would ask that we entertain a motion with respect to this proposal.
Mr. Chairman, I can make a motion. It looks like there's two motions I'd make.
They're not limited.
The first one being positive recommendation to the city council to approve the rezon from commercial general, the multifamily. Second motion, that the rear setback of the single family home be increased to 35 and that the access easements recorded along 250 north for the single family property. The, we've brought a positive recommendation to approve the plat amendment for the Riverview Apartments.
And Steve, do I need to consider these motions one at a time as opposed to conjoinedly? Because the second motion's contingent upon the first.
You could actually consider that all as a single motion. If you think they need to be discussed separately, you can do that. But really, it's, I mean, it's following along staff's recommendations. And then with the additional condition regarding the easement. And so whichever way you handle it, it could be handled as one. If, like I said, members of the commission wanted to discuss them separately, it could be handled separately.
Okay. Well, he posed it as two separate motions. So that's how I'll accept it unless he wants to combine it. So Jason, thank you for making those two motions. Are there a second for those two motions?
I'll second those motions, that motion, or those two motions.
Okay, so Jason has made two motions in conjunction with this proposal. The first one to recommend a favorable recommendation to the city council with this rezon request. And the second one, with respect to the rear setback, changing that to 35 feet on the single family home property. That's been seconded by Justin. Do we have any discussion on this motion, of these motions? Excuse me. All right. Well, let's go ahead and vote. I'm going to expand my screen so I can see everybody's hands. With the motions as outlined by Jason, seconded by Justin, all in favor, please indicate so I can see on the screen. We have Justin and Jason favorable eyes, all not in favor of this motion. That's Jim, me, and Dan, and Jason. Did I get you on the last vote? Just want to make sure I didn't miss somebody. Mark Francis, what was your vote? I had two negatives, three positives. I'm missing somebody. I can't see your screen, Jason, so I'm not sure if you raised your hand or not. I'm going to call for a revote because I can't see everybody. So again, all those in favor, please indicate so I can see. That's Jason and Justin. Okay, so two in favor of the motion. All those opposed, I indicate. So that's Mark, Jim, Dan, and myself. So motion fails. So we're at the point now where we still need to make a recommendation. What failed was making a favorable recommendation to the city council. So if there's a different perspective and someone wants to make an alternative motion, please do so now.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Given the feeling of the planning commission, maybe the applicant would be, and I don't know. I'm just wondering, maybe the applicant would be willing to look at decreasing the amount they're asking for for a rezon, which would likely mean shrinking the, maybe the number of units that they have. Still getting what they're looking for, but not completely shrinking the commercial site. I don't know if that would be favorable. I don't know if that would benefit both sides, but it may be worth something considering.
Yeah, I appreciate you keeping options open as well. So just in the interest of understanding if that is an option with the applicant, George Dash, do you have a comment on that? Is that something that you'd be willing to entertain as looking at an alternative project and land use there as far as the size you need?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, no problem. I think that this has been discussed. That's going to have to go one way or another eventually. So it's just too small to use as multifamily. And it's, and without tearing down the existing structure, it's probably too small to use as commercial. So that doesn't make a whole lot of sense if we can't move it. It's actually really tight with the request that's on the table, so.
Thank you. That's helpful. Appreciate that. Well, it is our responsibility to make a recommendation to the city council with respect to this. It does go there next. And the favorable recommendation failed. I'd like to entertain an alternative motion by someone who is willing to make that.
Mr. Chair, I don't know what other motion we would be putting out here if it's not going to be the way that it was proposed.
It's a good question. It would be, in my mind, the opposite. We're still making a recommendation to the city council, but instead of recommending that they approve it, but the positive recommendation, we'd be recommending that when it comes before them, that they don't. And so it'd be a negative recommendation. So when it comes before the city council, that they have, they have that perspective from this recommending body. Now, they can still do one way or the other, as I understand it. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, Wes and Steve, the city council can move forward regardless of our recommendation. It's just, you know, we're going through the process of this public hearing and that we've had tonight and listening to these perspectives and deliberating and making the best recommendation we can as stewards of our land use ordinances. So the short answer, Justin, and someone would need to say that we recommend a negative recommendation or forward a negative recommendation to the city council. That would be the language of the motion. So for those that did not vote in favor of the last motion, I'd be looking to one of you to put forth an alternative motion. Jason in the chat, if you want to just verbalize what you're asking.
I just, if we're to a point where the nays maybe don't have a way to proceed, maybe someone could consider a motion to reconsider and we could revote?
We absolutely could if someone puts that for. I just want to make sure everyone's had an opportunity. I'm trying to look at mouths and see if someone's talking on mute. But yes, that's absolutely an option, Jason.
As a matter of information, the only one that could vote, that could make a motion to reconsider would be someone who voted in the majority of the motions. Would have to be one of those that denied. And as the chair has stated, I mean, basically, is a recommendation yay or a recommendation nay to, based on the petition that's before you, to the city council.
Thank you.
Steve, just a question while we're thinking, regardless of a positive or negative, will there still be an additional public hearing?
Yes, before the city council, they will also have the information that the planning commission has had.
Thank you.
And that's one of the reasons that it is important when you vote is to basically state the basis for it, whether it's affirmative or negative, your bylaws really request it, particularly in the negative. And that's not too, well, obviously, it's to support and justify your decision, but it's also to transfer that information to the city council so they can have that to consider as well.
All right, so I can't make a motion as the chair, so I'm looking at Jim, Mark, Dan, who were the other nays. If you either make a motion to reconsider, as you were in the majority on this and Steve outlined, or propose an alternative motion to forward a negative recommendation to the city council.
This is Mark. The reason that I voted it down has already been addressed. I was trying to find a compromise as well as far as reducing the number of units and actually having more commercial space. That's already been addressed. And apparently, that's not an option to the applicant, if I understand that correctly.
That's how I understood it. If that's different, then they can weigh in, but that's what I heard as well.
So, you know, that was my concern is, you know, is there a halfway point here where we can compromise and see if we could have more commercial space and less room for apartments? Like I said, but apparently, that's not an option because of what the applicant has already indicated.
Well, and then one thing that's important to remember, you know, the planning commission is the chair to say that you're the steward of the code. You have an application before you and that the recommendation that goes to the city council, they have, obviously, they have more authority with regard to the interpretation and application of the code. And that's why they like to hear from you as a planning commissioner, because you're an apolitical body. You don't necessarily have to feel like you have to solve the problems for the city council. As you go through this process, they may see some shortcomings or some failings in the code that need to be addressed. But again, yours is actually a little bit more of a simple process. You just say, this is the way that the code is. Yes, we're concerned about the commercial. We're going to send this recommend, be positive or negative, and give the city council our concerns. They can make a decision on this application, maybe negotiate with the applicant, but then they can also send directions saying, these concerns, we feel are legitimate. These concerns, we think, need to be addressed with.
Mr. Chairman.
I heard Jason first and then Tony. So let's start with you, Jason.
Okay, sorry, Tony, you're more important than me, but.
Not at all.
Real quickly, could we maybe do like rescind the motion or something? And then suggest a motion and then before we vote, maybe the other folks could put their amendments in there to pass on to city council? Could we go down that road?
Basically, you have a motion that's failed. And so the floor is wide open. And it's, you don't have to rescind anything. I mean, again, you have to vote until you get a majority vote that makes a recommendation, regardless of what the recommendation is. So no need to rescind. The floor is open for anybody. Even the person who made the motion that failed could make another motion that is maybe somewhat modified. But on the other hand, it's really incumbent upon the four who voted down the prior motion to come up with what their motion is to support their position. And then, I mean, that's what the process is about. You make a motion, you have a debate, you discuss it, there's a vote. It doesn't work, then we see, you know, which is going to, which is going to.
Well, I would like to re-present the motion, hoping an amendment comes after it. And so with that, Mr. Chairman, I would like to re-present a motion to recommend for positive recommendation to the city council to approve the rezon. And the second motion to address the rear setback as a positive recommendation for the plat amendment. And maybe some other members could amend to that.
So just to clarify, the motion, as you stated, is the same as the original motion?
Correct.
So procedurally, Steve, does it need to be different or can you propose the exact same motion?
Generally, no, the motion's failed and so you don't entertain the same motion. That's why it's incumbent upon the four no votes to come up with a motion. Otherwise, the motion, if those proposing or those proponents, excuse me, of the first motion, as it failed, need to come up with an amended motion.
Mr. Chair.
Please.
Steve, a question, Steve. Is there a third option? Either approve the motion and deny the motion. Would a third option be to table the motion to give the planning commission time to consider? Is that an option as well?
It's always an option, but not one that I recommend. The time is now to make a decision. You have an application in front of you.
Okay.
If there was some additional information that you needed, but I'm just, I'm not seeing it.
Okay, thank you.
Good questions. And again, we've heard a couple of times that the pressure on the nays to propose an alternative to the motion that failed is incumbent upon us at this point. And, you know, some of the. And, you know, some of the themes that we'd heard and, you know, Mark made a great comment. I thought that, that a lot of these, these planning concerns have been addressed as part of the deliberation we have prior to, you know, making that first motion, particularly around the, the aspect of, of commercial and the options that become more limited with a smaller lot. And, and for me personally, as, as I look at the, the land use for that and, and what can be done on commercial and the fact that this hinders that, barring somebody buying up adjacent properties, but it just makes that process, you know, more, more difficult. And, and so for me, the, the biggest concern is the fact that, that we, we now render a piece of commercial property less desirable for the type of commercial interest that, that may help make Morgan what that, that designation was intended to be in the first place. And, and that's what I'm struggling with. I, I'm not able to overcome that. And, and I haven't heard an alternative argument for that. So that, that's why I feel that a negative recommendation to the city council is appropriate. It, it's not that these projects are, are in bad form. It, it's more, I'm, I'm looking at, at that commercial use and, and the intent of that zone to begin with. And the fact that we've now handicapped that piece of property. That's my concern.
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is Ty. I really appreciate everything that you guys are going through, but you make a really good point. And I have a question as you rest, because I have the same thing as the applicant. It needs to be one way or the other. Otherwise it's not big enough to do any meaningful commercial. Right? Or if you try and pare that down and they can't fit a, you know, a unit like they already have on there, then it's not going to work for them. But I'm trying to envision. I agree with the commercial, but what type of a, a commercial venture does anybody envision that, that we're protecting or saving? Because I've heard office space, which is in very low demand or doesn't, doesn't really accomplish a lot in the, the commercial zone. I like that it has the, the frontage off of a street. Like, like the adjacent property, but it doesn't seem to be as, as big as that one. So I think it just helped to, to know. You know, if it was all, is that what everyone's wrestling with is do we save the little piece that's there? Or, or are we hoping to go the next step and have an applicant that wants to turn the entire thing into commercial?
Mr. Chair, may I make a comment?
Please.
I, I think the, the discussion, the concern is more the, the philosophical debate around commercial versus residential. And that the fear is by shrinking this one parcel in, in, they have none of commercial space available that you're, you're going to handicap yourself for all of the other. I, I think it's important to keep in mind here, what we're saying is kind of jumping and pushing all these things together, saying, well, what about if 254, 250, 210, and so on, all get bought up by some future potential buyer? If that happens, plus they have the option to use, you know, other property or, or potential other property there, then that makes this decision, you know, maybe more negative for, for people on, on this call on the committee here. That's a, that's a hypothetical that is very, very difficult to do there. I would also argue that you are handicapped already by access off of the road. 250 north is a unique place and I know there's a question around who owns it. But let's assume the way that it's understood right now, that it is owned by the applicants themselves and, and that debate can be had later. Then, then you actually do need to consider, is the property already handicapped? And is this the best option and the best use of the property as, as it currently is? Because if you cannot grant access off 250, then the commercial value of that by itself doesn't, I don't think exists, or at least is not that desirable, unless you have all the other properties surrounding it. So I think it's important to, to indicate and, and look here that we have to take this particular piece of property for its uniqueness as it is now.
And I like that perspective. George Dash did indicate earlier that regardless of, of the owner of that residential property, that they're assuming that they're the, the, the owners of that lane, that private lane, that they would work with, would work with that owner for access off of 250 north. So to, to me, that, that's been resolved, at least verbally. Now, of course, you know, official agreement would have to happen at some point. But I like the idea of looking at the property independent of, of any other hypothetical. And, and the, the property as a commercial piece of property, regardless of what happens with a, a aggregator that comes in and buys adjacent pieces to, to put up something bigger. The, the property has more options as a commercial use, particularly given that we've already heard that the, the, the lane owners would grant access off 250 north as a larger piece than as a smaller piece. And, and that's, that's the part that, that, you know, just as an independent project in and of itself, recognizing, I think Tony mentioned earlier that, that most of these State Street projects are in fact, you know, buying up adjacent properties and, and making something of them. But if that didn't happen, I, I'm trying to preserve the fact that this piece is still a usable piece beyond an office.
There, I need to clarify something, I guess. It does not, the lot currently where the home resides, brick home on the corner, that's all inclusive is commercial, correct? Where the property line closer to State Street is, is what the applicant wants. But if we move a negative recommendation forward, then the whole thing is still commercial and they can still access State Street through the exit, they drop the home, they can still put it whatever applicant, whatever they, they envisioned their building, they would still have access off State Street. I guess I'm failing to see why access off of State Street would not be permissible.
Yes, staff can comment on that. We, we've been hearing that it's, that, that UDOT is reluctant to grant these small access points off of State Street. So that, that's the, that's the word we're hearing from staff.
Okay, so that's why, I guess that's why I've just said, well, the complex there access is on the 250 for this, for the same situation.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I agree with you, everybody that votes nay. I, I couldn't agree more that the commercial property is probably long-term more valuable than the multifamily. The reality is we have to go back to the code that we currently represent. Maybe we wish something that's not there. These property owners are asking for something. The staff is recommending approval. We don't seem to have any way other than we wish to go a different direction. So my wish is we could accelerate our general plan processing and make this, make this process better for the next go-round and let the property owners do what they need to do with their property. Cause I love when developers can develop their own property and get their own selfish, personal use out of it. That's wonderful America. So let them do what they want. They, they're holding them hostage. The fact that they have access off 250 is brilliant. To give that access is almost worth gold. The home that's there is probably worth nothing in a hundred years. It should probably be knocked down and some ride system company should figure out a way to make a ton of money with a little bit of space and some employee parking. And so I don't, what I'm recommending is that we pass on a positive approval to the, to the city because we don't seem to be able to come up with a way, a valid way to make a negative recommendation.
So again, we're at, at this point that we, we need to make some type of action here. You know, one option, which wasn't recommended by staff was to table this for future decision-making. And, and the recommendation as well before us now, let's make the decision now, which I agree with. That, that decision favorable or, or not, needs to be voted on. We had a motion fail to pass on a favorable recommendation to city council. And we haven't had any of the nays yet offer an alternative motion. So that's what I'm calling for at this point, either, either one of the, the favorables to rephrase a different type of motion, one of the nays to ask for reconsideration of the original motion, or one of the nays to give us an alternative motion that we can vote on.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion after hearing Mr. Aket. Yeah, leave things the way they're currently constituted. Let the property owners do what they've got with their property. So having said that, I make a motion that we afford a negative recommendation to city council that the boundary lines stay as they are and current property owners can do that as they see fit.
We have a motion on the table. Is there a second for that motion?
Yeah, this is Mark. I can second that based on, on the new explanation that's just been given by Jay and Jim. I, I think I can agree with that.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on this motion before we vote?
Can I, can I just hear that motion one more time? I, there was a part at the very front of that, Jim, I didn't hear. It was critical to whether I'm voting yea or nay.
Yeah, I just said, you know, after listening to you, yeah. Make a motion that we move a negative recommendation to the, to the city council and let the current property owners do with what they have right now.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this motion?
I, I do like, this is Dan. I do like that that line stays nice and clean as we look at, as we look at the city overall. It, it helps to have that, that viewpoint and a long-term perspective. So I, I, I appreciate what has been proposed.
Thank you, Dan. Any other discussion before we vote? All right, I can see everybody except for Jason and Mark. So if you can just go on video so I can see your vote, that'd be helpful. All in favor of the motion to pass on a negative recommendation to the city council, please indicate. That's Nathan, Jim, Dan, Mark, all those not in favor of the motion, please indicate. Justin and Jason are nays. Motion passes for two, to pass on a negative recommendation to the city council regarding the applicant's proposed plat amendment and rezone request. And those discussion, those factors that are part of that discussion are part of this public record that can be used as the city council evaluates the weight that they give this recommendation when this comes before them. At this point, I want to thank everyone for hanging in there. It's been a long evening. I appreciate your willingness and commitment to discuss these, these issues and be part of the process. The, the process continues and there's, there's a lot of different options that will continue to, to come before us in the city council. And, and it's, it's great that we have this kind of involvement in our community. So thank you so much for that. Before we adjourn today, just since we had such a long session, I, I want to make sure that we didn't miss anything. So I want to pause for just a second. If, if we did, please, please keep me in line. Otherwise we'll wrap up. Doesn't look like we have anything else. If we can have a, a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Justin. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, everyone.